Call to order the city council regular meeting for Monday, February 28. I would ask for a roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett. Councilmember Jennings.
Present.
Councilmember Canes.
She is here, just stepped out for a moment.
And Councilmember Miller. Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. I would invite the audience and everyone that's in attendance to do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which you stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, so we need the approval of the agenda, but it does look like there needs to be some adjustments to the agenda. One, including public comment before, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it before the action request. And then also my suggestion is to pull out the butts along invoice under the consent invoice. There needs to be approval of the agenda, but I'm just saying in advance, there are two adjustments that needs to be made. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I have motion to add public comment. Motion to call 5B, 5C, and 5H.
Give me a second.
Wait, can you repeat what you want to remove first?
She wants to add a public comment before our action items. Like to pull out 5B, which is the butts along invoice. 5C, which is the dispersment reports. And 5H, which is the Oakland County Communication Regarding Election Results.
Oh.
Need a motion? Yes, I mean a second. It's been moved in seconds. Is there any discussion around that? There are none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion to approve agenda as amended.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to also pull the minutes from the January 4th, January 24th, 2022 meeting from item 5A.
You said January 24th.
24th study session.
Okay. Give me a second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion around it? There are none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion approved to amend the agenda.
Now, under the consent agenda, all items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and not controversial. By the consent council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. As we already did, we moved items that we need to discuss. So I need someone to give a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Give me a second. It's been moved in seconds. We'll go straight to roll call, correct? Thank you.
No discussion.
As I just said, right?
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor.
Yeah.
Motion carried.
So just to make it clear, right before number six for the action request, we're going to have public comments. So we need to add that in. And for the listening audience, you have the agenda in front of you right before we go into the action request. There will be opportunities for public comment or anything that is not on the agenda. No, anything, yeah, anything that's on the agenda, I'll get it figured out. Anything that's on the agenda that you'd like to discuss, you do it right before action, the action request. So first thing up is the, what we removed was the butts along invoice.
January 24th.
I'm sorry, start first with that.
Yeah, so on page five of the agenda packet, there's a couple of small corrections. Paragraph, section B, second paragraph refers to Blake Griffin. I think that's a basketball player. Yeah, it should be Michael Griffin. And then in the end of that sentence where it says, infrastructure committee member Elaine, in between member of Elaine and Sage Robinson, comma. She was the committee, as a structure committee member. Then on page six, back billing, item H, the end of the second sentence cut off too quickly, it should be Pam explained, the majority of the list is residential for our residential customers. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Oh, I just page three, cannabis organs ballot discussion. It's attorney thing, or not big. Thank you. Anything else for the minutes? Next one will be the butts along invoice.
You should do a mayor on each one. Treat them all as separate motions from.
Oh, okay. So doing the first one. So I've a motion to approve the minutes now.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 24th, 2022 study session.
Is there a second? Second? Is there any further discussion regarding? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor. Councilmember Canes. Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Motion carried to amend the agenda minutes.
Next one will be the butts along invoice. I pause at this one, looking at the contract that was actually signed and going over that particular contract. I did not see, or in the contract, it said that they would, butts along would provide us with a monthly update of how much we were spending. And from my understanding, there was not a update. So from, this was in July, I believe that we signed in July or, no, August, August 26th. And then we got billed in
14.
Done by September 14th, got a bill in October, correct?
That is correct.
And we got nothing in between the August and the
It was in a month. It was in a month. To, to my knowledge, no, we've not received anything. I've not seen anything.
Okay, and so my, between that and then also from what I saw that we signed, it was only for the $5,000 retainer. We did agree to the hourly rate, but that's when it get a little cloudy for me because it was signed about acknowledging the hourly rate.
Yeah, it indicates, it indicates in that document, and I don't know if that's part of this packet or not.
Do you happen to have that?
I have a single copy. I can print, co-print more, but Karen, I mean.
Who would like to see it? Who would you like? Who would I have for you?
I have, I have.
Mayor, looking at the invoice from butts along, it said that her professional services rendered for the period ending September 30th, 2021. And when they go to us, October 31st.
They're a month behind in that.
So technically, you should have gotten a update in, updated billing in September. Yes, I, yes, okay. So let us know. Well, yeah, so let us know. I'm sorry. Somebody also wants to get in. Go ahead, Scott.
So the, the retainer agreement does, does represent that their services will be rendered on an hourly basis, which the retainer is just an upfront advance of those hourly services. So I don't see, I don't see any issue with, with the way their billing was, I, rephrase that. I think we've already discussed some of the issues that, with how their billing was presented and their lack of communication with it, that the city was approaching and had exceeded that retainer amount. But under their retainer agreement, their billing is consistent with what their retainer agreement states.
If we don't agree to it today, then make it so the city or, or whatever, because there's, you're saying that it does explain in there that.
Yeah, we've, we've agreed to compensate butts along for all of their services based on an hourly rate.
I personally still have an issue with the fact that we only approved $5,000 for it, but anyone else have a discussion of opinion about that?
Yeah, the thing that, I mean, and Scott, I mean, if we don't pay this, they do it, do we have a chance of money? I mean, you, you may be able to go through and line by line, you know, look at the service that was provided and was it a duplicative service? I think Barb made reference to, was a lot of research done, you know, was that time? It's very hard to nitpick an attorney's bill because that's just is, but, so, so I would say that is there some possibility that there might be a reduction of the total amount owed by the city? Maybe. Would it exceed what has already been discounted? Probably not. And would the city ultimately be responsible for payment? Yes. But that, that's my assessment. On fees and also And fee strike, yeah. There is in there as part of the terms and conditions that, that there are few fee disputes that we, and they are required to pursue collection, that the city would be responsible for their actual which, as we can see, are significantly higher than.
I'm sorry. Looked like those on the ground. My bad. Um, well, that, I mean, that's my, my thing is that I think that and again, me not having any law school under my belt, it's still, it's like it was not explained to us in that. I don't agree with it. That's all I can say. So if anybody has any other discussion, we can take a motion on it. We're going to take a motion on that.
What is this? Are we, I guess, a clarification, are we voting to approve it or is it already been paid?
Well, I'm not understanding why it wasn't, I don't know why it wasn't the consent agenda debate. I don't think that that. I was taking it out of the consent agenda because I didn't think that it should have been in the consent agenda. So I know that we should have had a discussion behind it.
Well, there was, it was on the
Yes.
It was on the agenda for discussion, the general agenda. And then there was a special meeting where it was on the agenda to have discussion again with, with butts along. And there, there was no discussion at that point from council. My recommendation, because it is, it is a account payable that's due to the city, that it be placed on the consent agenda with the dispersment report for payment. And it wasn't the dispersment report.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, it has an idea.
That's what I was kind of thinking that, you know. So what do we need to do that? Because I didn't think that it was paid.
At this, at this point, the suggested motion for me would be to direct the city charter to disperse, disperse.
So it has to be a motion. That's my point. We're coming back to that. It has to be a motion for it. So who would I like to make a motion for?
I will begrudgingly make a motion to pay the butts along $15,000 fee that's due for services related to the past election.
Second.
Second.
The move in seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
No.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next one up was for the dispersment report.
I just have some questions. Page 23. Under administration, this is revenue expenditure report for elections. It's 339.94% over the budget. Is that, is this reflected in butts along bills or what? Is, is that, is that the only thing or is that the
All the additional expenses are in there.
The original stat, or the additional staff that we had to hire, also that included in there? Okay. Um, page 24, under public service. Sidewalk maintenance, 236.62% over, of the budget's been used. What is, what, what is that?
That's the sidewalk program that we've been working on. And that's the bills that went out to collect on them.
Oh, so we had to pay it upfront and it will be reimbursed. Right, okay.
We did put some private capital improvement, obviously, money in there to get us started, but
We're not using that.
We're not, okay.
I noticed throughout the packet, auditing and accounting. We've gone over the budgets. It's listed in multiple areas. What is that about?
We have had to bring in, I've had to have some auditors come in and help me with a few things. A couple of reports for year end because now, now timing, since I'm doing all the financial, the all the bankrupt ancillations, everything that a person below me would do that I do not have. So I'm doing it all. So we've, and this is back when Cheryl was here and that was approved by Cheryl, that I could bring in extra help to get through some bankrupts and things like that. And that was also extra help during the audit time. Okay.
Page 27. This is just traffic controls. Almost four, almost 500% over. What, what is the traffic control? What is that charge and where does the revenue come from?
Those are streetlights. There are the streetlight traffic controls that we have. And this year, there was a bill that we were billed for, and I don't remember the exact amount, but they had done some extensive work and they bill us for it. They divided up between like Southfield, us, and different areas.
Were those the New Arms or was that the year before?
Might have been the New Arms.
Yeah, that was a grant, I thought. That would have been two years ago.
I know that we did get a, just a hefty bill recently from the traffic control.
Okay.
From Oakland County.
Okay. And then non-motor facilities, 240% over budget. What, what is non-motor facilities under that same section?
Usually non-motorized is the bike route would be a non-motorized expense. Any curbs, sidewalk curbs, those are non-motorized. And those are for handicapped, accessible, things like that. I would have to look to see exactly what was put into that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um. Sorry, the two sided. Then on to the check register, page 34. Noticed on your CLS content on a little linen service. What is, what are, what are we doing linen service?
Linen services are for the towels for cleaning the kitchen. They're also, if we need tablecloths, like the black tablecloth or anything like that, anything that we do, like with council, if we have a meeting downstairs, we usually have tablecloths on the tables. Okay, that's the linens that we usually get.
Okay. And then I noticed this little bit different card member services, which are the credit cards. And there's many of those throughout here. And it will, it just says December 2021 statement. And it will say training, but there's a bunch in government operations. Is there a detail that's available to see what the breakdown of that is?
It would be the credit card. You'd have to look at the credit card statement because we can only put so much in line item. And that's all we can fit into the line item. So we would have to have you look at the whole credit card statement, which is available.
Okay, all right. Then I may do that because somewhere a person and, you know, that kind of thing. So, and some of them are pretty significant. That's it for that. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the dispersment report.
So second. It's been moved in seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
And next was Oakland County Communication Regarding Election Results.
Yes. There was some communication that was included in the packet between the mayor and Mr. Rozell with Oakland County regarding some of the election, call them discrepancies. And I just wanted to point out that the, the issues are misstated in this email. It was whether or not election law had been violated or some of the other things. And the way this was presented, this, the question is not what we were, what we were looking for. So I just wanted to go over a few things to kind of set this straight because it's been out there. And as I said, it's been misrepresented and misstated. According to Michigan election law, an affidavit of identity and the nominating petitions must contain the position that a candidate is running for. No changes can be made after the filing deadline. Lathirps filing deadline was July 20th at 4 o'clock PM. Oakland County unofficial candidate list had two candidates for the two-year term, Barbara Canes and Bruce Cantor. Bruce was also a candidate for the full term. July 23rd, Oakland County elections site put up the official candidate list. There were two candidates for the two-year term, Barbara Canes and Greg Rubelo. Bruce Cantor's name was crossed off. This created some questions and some red flags. Barb questioned why Bruce had filed for two terms. And then she asked why Greg Rubelo's name was appearing on the list three days after the filing deadline, when her information appeared on the website within an hour after the filing deadline. There's no response. There were more questions. Found out that on July 22nd, past the filing deadline, the county had reached out to the city regarding Mr. Rubelo's incomplete paperwork. Mr. Rubelo was contacted and created an alternate affidavit of identity that day. It was sent to the city attorney and he created another alternate affidavit of identity. And that was sent to the county.
Can we timeout right there? It was not an affidavit of identity. For about the 20th time, it was an affidavit, which is a sworn statement. Okay? So I don't know if you want to put this as like a standard item on every agenda so we could talk about it again and again.
Well, I was just so surprised when this, when this came, but, excuse me.
Excuse me.
Excuse me. This was in the packet and it's, it's wrong and it was misstated.
Technically, it's not wrong because it was, it was explaining why, exactly what you're saying is explaining exactly why.
No.
I'm still talking. I'm still talking. Hello, hello, hello. Excuse me. Well, I was also doing help with that. So I'm still talking. So it was the fact that you're talking about, why was Greg Rubelo's name, why did it appear on the county's roll after the fact? Mr. Rozell, who is the director, I'm still talking, the director of elections, the director of elections, has stated in his email that this is what happened and that the fact is that I was hoping that at this point, this could always be squashed. And it's the reason why I put it in the email. And just because you're saying that some of the things was not, we're not reporting it correctly, I would have to also say that some of the things that you're saying is not correct.
Well, that is not true because I have the notes and I actually, I actually did it. So the question was, did Mr. Rubelo submit complete paperwork prior to 4 o'clock PM on July 20th, which Michigan election law requires that the paperwork is complete and that no changes can be made to anything after that filing date. Rather than following the law and disqualifying one candidate, the city attorney insisted that everything was in order. Mayor said she had received lots of emails, texts, and calls regarding all the candidates. The city attorney recommended hiring butts along to do a thorough review.
Okay, let's stay with the letter because it has nothing to do with how
Absolutely.
Excuse me, because we're not going to do this all day. And I know no one here wants to sit and hear this all recap. But the fact is, we're going, we're not going to go on what, who said, what said. This is what, this is what, this is what the director of the election
And he has nothing to do with it. Kelly.
Are you, are you kidding me? But the right
With him. So I also have some emails that I couldn't
Okay, well, then you should have included it. But continue on. But the fact is, yes, there were numerous people that
Okay, ultimately butts along determined that Mr. Rubelo had not filed his paperwork on time and that the document the city attorney created was not a replacement. This was the question asked three days after the filing deadline. Now tonight, we just paid $20,000 to butts along. Butts alongs that we paid five already. Butts along's bill was $28,339.50. It was cut down to $20,000. This was money that was totally wasted. When pressed for the names of those that challenged the petitions, it was revealed that there are only two people. Rick Williams, a new Lathirps village resident as a neighbor of the mayor Protem, and Mark Watts, a resident and member of the DDA. So yes, city leadership did violate Michigan election law. And on top of that, they wasted taxpayer dollars.
We did not violate on record. We did not violate election law whatsoever. And
Changes.
I, I will say, the city did not violate election law. Our city attorney did not violate election law. It has been put into an email saying that. And if there's any other further discussion about it, we can do that. Otherwise, I need to have a motion to approve this information.
I'll make a motion to approve the It would be a motion to accept the court. Right, accept the, the email from election, Oakland County elections.
And then may I add my report?
And then a second.
Second.
It's been moved in seconds. Is there any further discussion for this particular item? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes.
No.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next on the agenda, we have, I think we got everything covered for that. So it'll be public comment. Public comment for anything that is on the agenda. You have three minutes to see. Does anyone?
I just wanted to ask about the click fix issue. I had an issue with my drain covert that was put on click fix by somebody else. And when I signed up for the first time Monday to go on the click fix to check my drain issue, it was closed Tuesday, when I just signed up Monday. And Rami said that he had come to my house, spoke with me, and said it was the owner's responsibility to fix the collapsed drain. But if I wanted the city to pay for it, they would charge you.
And would this was recently?
Yes.
Is Rami back?
Rami is back as of last, that's Monday.
Okay, can you take her address and investigate that first?
Well, he did not speak with you.
I have a camera on my front porch. He didn't come to my He didn't come to my. I believe you. I just want them to be able to contact Rami and talk with them.
Really bad to lie. I'm like, I have one other question. I heard you talking about sidewalks. Last summer, I allowed the workers to came to my door to ask if they could dig up my pipe to see if I had copper to make sure we didn't have the plant situation. And I had all new plumbing. And I said, okay, I'll let you. And I promised not to wreck my grass to get all new bad recently. And I let them. And then when it came back, they broke my whole sidewalk. And it's been all like, it's not even like just little cracks. It's all like crumbled in. And I I didn't report it because they said the city will fix it. So is that going to be fixed by the city? Because I didn't report it or should have put in.
So again, so we take the address and then we'll, Suzie will follow up if you see me on there. And then we get the bottom. You're welcome. Anything else?
I just want to ask.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak?
No, I'm not seeing any hands raised.
I will close a public comment. We will move into the action request. First ones up is for the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget amendments.
Mayor and council, every year we do budget amendments twice a year. We try to do them in January and then we'll do them once again in June before the end of the fiscal year to clean up anything that we're either over or under where we can take money and move it somewhere else. These are our budget amendments that were our actuals as of December thirty first and to amend them as February. And is there any questions on any of them?
Do these, a lot of these deal with the questions that I was asking? Yes, they do.
If you look on page one oh one under elections, you'll see that the actual of December thirty first, twenty twenty one was thirty three, nine ninety four. I amended it to thirty three, nine nine four, anticipating that we're not going to have any elections until after the fiscal year.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question. Go ahead.
Just to, what is C page one hundred? What is C D B G project?
Community development block grants. We get money from the county. A lot of times we approve, we approve an agreement with them. And most of it is like, if we have a senior luncheon, we can file the receipts. And there's different things we have to file, which is kind of sometimes lengthy. But you can file that and then we get money back from the county for it.
Two seven nine oh seven California. Under two. It's a zero now. That piece property to see you know.
Yeah, that's the triangle.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
I had a question on page one oh nine. I got two questions here. So the stop boxes for the Capitol Center, so that got amended up to from fifty thousand up to a hundred thousand. I think we were paying seventy five dollars a piece for them. But fifty thousand dollars, that would be six hundred and sixty seven stop boxes. And we're only doing a total of three hundred and fifteen at the most. So I'm not quite sure how that number jumped up the way that it did.
Okay, you all go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I mean, we happen to have Scott in the room too, so he might be able to help with that.
I don't know.
Well, I was gonna say, I don't know if Suzie talked to him or not, but I talked to Suzie about the projects and that. She says that they've been doing quite a bit of work ahead of time or more work ahead. So she told me to raise it to fifty thousand, but it probably come back down.
Right, I thought the same thing. We're doing, we did a little bit more than what we thought we were going to do. But but still, even if we did, you know, we're only doing three hundred and fifteen. So that would be a total of.
And that wasn't something I knew was exact and figured to.
Okay.
But I knew we were going to be, we were already over the fifty thousand because we're at fifty one thousand in December. So with the spring coming up, I didn't know how many more they were going to do.
Okay, and then similar question with the fire hydrant.
That's the same.
Yeah, I know we budgeted forty, we did forty seven. I think we're still planning on doing some more over the winter. So that would be the. I think that's all I have.
Any further discussion, page ninety nine? Under administration, that's up one hundred twenty nine thousand, one thirty eight. What is that covering?
That is, a lot of that.
Let me go back to the page that is administration.
That's the summary.
There's fringes in there. And we've had a couple of people leave that we've had to pay out vacations, personal time, things like that. And some of them had quite big balances on the on the books that we had to pay out. So and when we pay that instead of taking that as salary, because it's vacation and personal time and comp time, I take it out of the fringes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. We did the. Oh, we need a motion to accept the, oh, to action requests for consideration for approval of the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget amendments.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget amendment. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Protem Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next action request for consideration of approval will be direct, excuse me, the bid recommendation for the twenty twenty two pavement reconstruction program.
Hello, mayor and council. So as you know, we're just got ready to begin our twenty twenty two pavement reconstruction program. On, let's see, on February fifteenth, we received, we received five bids for the pavement reconstruction program. And enclosed, enclosed is the bid recommendation for your review. The city engineer is recommending that we go with asphalt specialist, which I have a staple in there. I'm sorry. Have you had it's two million four hundred.
Ninety four thousand, six hundred and twenty eight and twenty cents.
This is the one that you sent us the update? Yes. I'm sorry, I used a previous memo for my. Just one more time.
It's two million, four hundred and ninety four thousand, six hundred and twenty eight dollars and twenty cents.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the pavement reconstruction program bid with the removal of Meadow Brook Way.
Is there a second? It's removed in second, any discussion?
Can you repeat the motion?
Yes, I make a motion to accept the twenty twenty two pavement reconstruction program bids with the removal of Meadow Brook Way.
That's the dirt road, the challenge that was discussed a few meetings ago.
Is there any discussion around it? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Canes. Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
No.
Councilmember Jennings.
No.
Mayor Protem Cantor.
No.
Motion denied.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty two pavement reconstruction program as noted.
Need a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Protem Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes. Councilmember Miller.
No.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. She voted, yes.
She voted, yes.
Next on the agenda.
Can I make one comment on that? Just wanted to make one, one comment. The, the accepted bid came in about a hundred and eighty one thousand dollars lower than what our actual estimate was, which was similar to what happened for the twenty twenty one program. And it's also the same vendor from twenty twenty one, which, which we were satisfied with the work and also worked well with. And, you know, I know that there were some issues that we worked with them towards the end of the construction season that they were going to fix in the upcoming year. So, so it's a good deal all around so far, so.
Thank you. Next action request for consideration of approval of the back billing for the underbuild one and a half inch water customer.
As you're all aware, we've been discussing the backfilling for the one and a half water customers who've been under billed over the course of the last few years as a result of four digit reads, as prescribed to degrees. The estimate, the estimated backfilling water customers will, it is estimated that backfilling water customers will result in recovering approximately one hundred and thirty thousand. I wasn't sure if there was any action that anyone wanted to take about this.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to instruct the city treasurer to begin the backfilling program for the one and a half inch water meter customers who were under billed due to the four digit meter reads, running four digit meter reading reason. As part of this program, ask that these customers be backfilled by applying the under billed units against the lowest water rate and effect during time period. And that consistent, well, and then that these residents, residents be permitted to enter into a monthly repayment program for a maximum of two years if their total load is under two thousand dollars and three years if it's over, over two thousand dollars.
In a second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? And none, roll call please.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Mayor Garrett.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is the the updated study session start time.
Yes, so back at your meeting in December, you approved your meeting schedule, which indicated that study sessions were begin at six P M. Unfortunately or fortunately, however, you would like to look at that. You've had a lot to discuss in those study sessions. So the interim city administrators have suggested officially moving that start time to be five thirty to allow yourselves a little bit more time. As we're asking you to consider changing start time of the study sessions to five thirty.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to amend the scene. Council study session scheduled to reflect at early start time of five thirty P M.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion around it? I do think that it makes a hardship on people that have a full time job.
Absolutely.
If they get off at five o'clock, just I mean, this, the way the world is going back to normal, going to an actual office and trying to get here by five thirty. The original from the twelve years that I've, eleven years I've been here, has been the five thirty was the actual dinner time. And then six o'clock was the actual study session time where, I mean, you can kind of get your things together at that time personally. I think if you read your packet and you are prepared at six o'clock, they're ready to go. That's just my thoughts.
What if, what if we, what if we did something different and, and started the study session at six and started the council meeting at seven thirty?
I'm.
No, the time of the meeting is at.
I mean, I'm fine with that. I just think that that's a hardship going forward. If you change it to five thirty, that's just not the way of the world anymore of people working from nine to five or eight to five and trying to get here.
It's also not convenient for residents.
Yeah. So what if we didn't, what if we changed the motion to start it at, as I said, start at six and then start that council meeting at seven thirty?
Or you need to squash this, you have to squash this motion and then. So this motion has to.
It could be a modification. Someone could offer a modification. So I'll, I'll move to modify the, the motion to start the study sessions at six P M. The council meeting starting at seven thirty.
Second.
So it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion around that? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And that's the end of our action request. Next is the city administrator's report.
Mayor council, just want to report that the graffiti on eleven mile has been cleaned up as fast as they can. And so we're glad that they were able to do that for us due to the cold weather, took a little longer than expected. Excuse me. We also have gotten copies of additional proposals for the generator. So we now have three. I've gone through these extensively and spoke to the other city administrators. And it looks like we're going to go with Detroit Electric. It seems to be an all inclusive plan. And I think they'll do a great job for us.
I have two things, mayor council. The first thing is we have hired a new person for a front counter. She will be starting on March fourteenth, as long as everything goes good with her physical and then also her background check. So those are the two things. She has signed the unconditional offer of employment. The other thing we're having problems with is finding a city clerk. Every city clerk we've talked or we interviewed, every, all the city clerks we've interviewed, they have turned it down for one reason or another. And most of them are turning it down because of our benefits here. Their, other cities have better benefits than we do or they I don't know how else to put it, but they're just, I don't know. Compensation. That they're turning it down. And so we're kind of at a standstill. I mean, we have it out there still. We haven't gotten any more applications or anything. So we don't know how you want us to go from here.
That sounds like we need to discuss the benefit package.
I just have a station about the package we got to change for.
Sure. Yeah.
Right, I mean, currently we have M M L do a benefits compensate, benefit analysis like they did for us before with, with salary. It was about two years ago.
I mean, I'm sure they can do a benefit packet.
I think they do. Something, I think you can go online and get something because I know every year we're supposed to submit our benefits and everything. So I'm not sure if they have it or before that.
So four offers went out, four people declined. And now no one's applying.
I mean, could we, I mean, potentially raise the salary associated with, I mean, we need to get a clerk.
Salary seems a little low.
Music seems a little low.
It seems a little low.
Yeah, I mean, could we, could we raise the salary maybe ten grand or up to ten grand and go back and reoffer down the line in our order of our preference?
I think you also need to have it.
You may not have had anybody who applied because of the salary.
Okay. Re-adjust.
Yeah, readjust.
I think we also need, if you can call it M M L about the benefit package because I think you're going to run into the same situation with the city manager search.
We also have a new police officer starting tomorrow. Ken Stead is a tiree, did twenty years for the city of Beverly Hills and starts tomorrow.
Last but not least, I mean, obviously, none of us are really wearing masks except for Mayor Protem Cantor. But with Oakland County's health department weaving the mask requirement. I feel it's appropriate to also remove that requirement from visitors of City Hall.
Thank you. City attorney. Thank you. Boards, commissions, committees, SAKWA quarterly reports first.
Quarterly report is in the packet. Also is going to be a rate hike. Great Lakes Water Authority proposed a three point four percent water rate increase effective July first, twenty twenty two. And our increase will be a little bit lower than that. And we will be getting more information on that. And again, that will be effective July first. They went, look at their Great Lakes Water Authority Board is looking for a new C E O. That search has taken a lot longer than they had hoped that it would. Highland Park. There are some issues with Highland Park owing quite a bit of money and they're still working on that. And there was a forty eight inch main break in Farmington Hills. They are using a new process to repair that. They're also looking into using robots or some of the, some of the work that's, that's being done. They're looking at a couple of different companies. They had a decrease in revenue mostly due to lower than planned water sales in Bloomfield Hills and Bloomfield Township. There was also a decrease in expenses. They talked about multiple grants that are available. We have actually taken advantage of a couple of them. There are a couple of others that we still might be able to be involved with. I'm not sure who does that.
I mean, typically I'm, I take the lead on most grants.
Okay.
Was there a specific one that you want?
There's like local government critical infrastructure planning branch.
We, I did look into that one because that looks super exciting compared to what we're, what we've got going on. That is for planning. I literally doing the plans that have already, that we already have in place. Yep, we've already done so.
Okay, yep, okay. One that we have already received was the D R A M, the distribution of water. Yeah. Yes. Yes. And then there's a couple of other ones that may, we might be able to take part in, may cost us three thousand dollars per community to get things going. But then there should be some other additional funding that will be available.
Yeah, I think the news anyway is that G L W A indicated that the three point four percent rate increase was pretty much solely due to Highland Park. And the fact that they owe something like sixty million dollars in water and almost equal in sewer.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty high.
There was a closed session, so I can't discuss the details, but yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was all over the news.
Anything for Sakura quarterly report?
And the report is obviously in your packet. There is also going to be a rate increase that goes into effect July one. I want to say it's close to around four percent. We should be getting final, final numbers here in the next month or so. They do have some pretty, I think this is where they were talking about the robots. They do have some new robots for sorting. They're looking into two different, two different systems. Really trying to figure out which one is going to be the best. There has been a lower amount of recycling appointments. They have them open. We'll just really aren't taking advantage of them. So they're looking to figure out a way to better utilize this. I mean, they have been understaffed, you know, like everyone else hit by COVID, so. If they're looking to see those recycling numbers increases as we move into the spring months, working on, obviously has this material drop off. Troy has an interesting program that I'm like to do a bit more research on. They actually bring dumpsters. They've done an assessment of what materials are the most recycled in their community and they have, so for Troy, it's been cardboard. And so what they've done is they've had additional, they've brought in additional dumpsters for like a weekend to do additional drop offs. So just considering doing something, something along those lines, gathering some information from Sakura to see what, what materials are most most needed and perhaps that's something that we can look to do.
Thank you. Yep. Anything else from boards, commissions or committee?
Yes, I would just like to let Suzie and councilwoman know and know that when you get the rates, I would like to get those as soon as I can because I do have to work on the budget. So, and I will need those rates.
Thanks. I will say for planning commission, we are, they have been discussing electric vehicle charging stations and they are we're going to be having a public hearing probably in April for, for that ordinance, for the amendment to the ordinance to include electric vehicle charging stations. So that'll be coming before you, fifty months.
Okay. Thank you. Any unfinished or new business? About to public comments, this is open to speak about, I guess, anything in, you have three minutes to speak. This discussion is just where you can let us, let the council know or ask your questions, but please know it's not a dialogue between the council and the public. The council can respond during council comments. We have anybody?
There's no one left in the other room. So anyone online just needs to raise their hand.
Thank you. Those other comments, mayor and council comments. The one thing, there was a function this weekend at city hall. And the one thing that was noted is that we need to start looking into parking, parking, painting the lines in the parking lot. So it's not a free for all for however, for parking. I think that's really all I have. I'll try to think of something else.
I have, just so you know, I have brought that up to Scott Wrangler and asked him to help give me some costs on, on what it would be to resurface because this was also brought up at the D B A meeting last month and yeah, what can we do? So Scott and I are working to come up with some numbers and a good way forward for that.
Oh, and also I was contacted about Michigan first, the parking lot that is the light that's coming on the backside of Red River. They're not turning it off at night and causing a glare into residents' homes.
I have a conversation.
Thank you. I think that's. Councilmembers comments.
Got a question. Suzie, it's coming for you. What is O C Navigator?
The Oakland County Navigator Program to be rebranded as not the navigator program, but something different to be determined. I don't know what. That I, I think I mentioned this very briefly in December. So Oakland County has allocated approximately three million dollars in funding of their Oakland County funding to establish what they called at the time a navigator program. And this is the group of eight individuals that are embedded in eight of eight communities throughout Oakland County for the purposes of serving as a business connection point for small micro businesses that are predominantly underserved population. So they, there is not yet been an announce, an official announcement by the county executive, which I understand will be taken in the next couple of weeks. They will be having an, an open house to launch their program. There are no details at this point. May I ask where you saw this?
Oh, on my report, yeah.
So they're still on the fireside Friday. So I, that sounded like, that sounded familiar, but the other one.
Yeah, it sounded, yeah, sorry. I, yeah, so we're still working out those details. Originally it was going to be like the day of the announcement. And so there, I'm letting them work their, work their communications out, but it will be, it will be available and open to everyone. I'll let you all know. When it's been scheduled, I've asked that it, it happens here. I know they, there, there is embedded staff in Southfield. So they're like, oh, I prefer to have it in Lakewood Village. So it could be in the community room. It could be depending on whether and when they end up having it be, maybe we have it outside. Perhaps we have it at Michigan first at cement. There's.
The options are endless. So ignore it.
Ignore it for now, right? I think that was, that was when they, we had a more refined idea, but not defined, so. And I forgot to say that also the state of the city is I was told March sixteenth, but from what I was told today from Councilman Jennings is that it's March twenty third. And so I'm hoping that you all can tell us what day it really is.
I'm going on a limb. I'm going to say it's the twenty third. I did call and I left a message with their executive director to please confirm the date and because had two different stories and asked.
It is on their website that says March twenty third, but I have an email for March sixteenth. So I guess that's T V D.
Correct. I would like to know if any council person would like to attend, please let me know as soon as possible because I believe table sales, tables and tickets are closing tomorrow or the day after. So a rather quick turnaround. Yeah.
Just put me down.
I, yes, I, I've also asked them, they need anything additional for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Just have an update from overtime training. Dear councilmember Karen Miller, we are eager to begin our partnership and take the next steps towards introducing our programs to the residents of Lakewood Village. As outlined in our initial proposal, the primary goal of this partnership will be to offer quality basketball opportunities to aspiring athletes with the purpose of helping them gain the confidence and discipline needed to fulfill their potential. Additionally, we intend to incorporate valuable life skills into each program to better prepare players for the challenges they may encounter off the court as student athletes. After careful thought, we believe the programs listed below would be a great addition to your perks and rep program and can be beneficial to all players from all genders, skill levels and ambition. They do introductory basketball classes, coed grades K through four, youth basketball classes, coed grades five through eight, a youth basketball league, which would be coed grades Asians, maybe five through sixteen. I'm not sure. Grades five through sixteen means it's college. I'm not sure. See, and seasonal basketball camps that would also be coed. At this point, they're looking for a temporary place and trying to work with at Bernie Middle School or Southfield Lethr Pike School. And they would like to offer, be able to offer this to our residents. Thank you. Any other council comment?
I do have something minor. I just wanted to thank the administration or Lakewood for their Black History facts and consistent with those throughout the entire month of February. That's all I have.
Anything else? Otherwise I would take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, this is the second I'll be good.
Second.
We're in during every night.